So we'll talk that side.
No sheep's head.
Yeah, when they had that problem with the roof.
Let's watch Trinity C.
Andy, did you get some tags?
Between Terry and I were like.
I know.
She said she's warm too.
No, I went to go trim it and then I went to touch up my trim and the guard, the guard fell off, so I had a.
Just got shorter and shorter.
Looks better, Randy.
I had a, I had a.
Just like that, please.
We are on video guys. All right. I'm, I'm gonna go off my clock, 'cause I think most cell phones are pretty sanitary. Good evening. We would like to call the regular Holbrook City Council meeting to order at six P M. on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Roll call, everybody's in attendance. We'd like to start the evening with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Pack, followed by an invocation by Gloria Mon- hey, I almost said Mon- Monroya, sorry, my brain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with the city council meeting, Lord. Father, we ask you to be here among them, each and every one, Lord God. The agenda, the council members, the mayor, and the city manager, Lord, and all in attendance, Father, that you be over them. Father, we also ask for prayers over anything that needs to be talked about, Lord, and the activities and events that are coming up in Holbrook during this fall season, Lord, that you be with us and be with the school, the schoolchildren, Lord, and the teachers, the city of Holbrook, Lord God, the whole community, Lord. Father, we pray for our first responders, law enforcement officers, and military personnel, Lord. Our election that is coming up, Lord, we just thank you for everything that you do, and in everything, your hands are in it, Lord God. We give you all honor, glory, and praises because you, my Lord, is worthy of repraise in your name, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
And, thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome.
Item number four, consent agenda. Hopefully, if everybody's had a chance to read through the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none will open the floor for a motion.
I move we pass the consent agenda as written.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye, aye. Motion passes.
Aye.
Item number five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
All right, thank you. Item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
And there are two items, there are two requests.
Awesome, thank you. All right. And so for agenda item, um, the person that's speaking, uh, we were asked that they would come to the podium and introduce themselves. And then also you'll have five minutes. Lisa Hunter, our clerk, will actually set a timer for us. When your five minutes is up, we'll ask you to, um, be seated at that time. And just as a reminder, as a council, we're not allowed to have a discussion. All we can do is ask administration to look into any concern. So with that, uh, we'd like to invite David Johnson to come to the podium.
I just came to hear what's going on with the water situation. Heard it, water is being, uh, cut off. So I haven't heard what's happening yet, so that's the reason I'm here. So don't have anything to say until I know what you're doing.
All right, thank you.
Might have a comment after you're through.
So unfortunately, there's not another time afterwards, but we would welcome you to come, um, talk to administration or find a council member.
Okay. When I asked the city water about, uh, when there's turned off water, how long it was gonna be, nobody could say. So that's my, my curiosity. If you're gonna turn off water, what for, for how long? Other than Sun Valley, I hope my water and water is gonna be turned off. I need to know that. That's my lifeblood. Okay?
All right, we'll, hopefully, we will answer those questions for you. Thank you. All right. And then we will ask Laura, is it Homling?
Homling, yes, thank you. I'm Laura Homling, and, um, I'm a, um, we recently purchased property in, um, just, uh, east of Holbrook. And so I, I appreciate your time today and addressing you today. In an hour or so, we're all going to be headed home. Imagine that you step through your door and your spouse or your children greet you with the news that your water is turned off. You spend several hours on the phone trying to figure out what's happening. Eventually, you learn that the city shut off everyone's water because a few people didn't pay their bill. That is the situation that I and hundreds of other residents of the greater Holbrook area found ourselves in a few weeks ago. For me, it was a Friday. Once I learned the water was turned off, which was a paper sign on top of the spigot, I had to take the day off work to find water. It took me five hours to get thirty gallons of water. I am new to this area. My business partner and I have recently purchased property east of Holbrook and are building a small retreat center where we offer travelers and locals alike the opportunity to enjoy this beautiful land, explore their creative side through the arts, crafts, and even writing. We are planning on coming into Holbrook to offer classes and events such as starting an Etsy business with your, with their crafts and after, even after-school activities, if we, you know, can make those relationships for local children and teens. Because of these efforts, we won a grant with the Moonshub Organization and Flagstaff and are participating in SRP's Tourism Task Force to implement tourism in this area to replace the shutdown of the electricity plants in Joe City and St. John's. Since it takes so long to get a well, we have been water hauling. It took us three months just to get a quote for a well. In this time, we have met many of the local community who rely on water hauling for their needs. Any gap in their access to water puts them at risk. It is well-known that water access directly impacts the public health. On Monday, I met with the city manager Sharon, and I appreciated that meeting, but she adamantly stirred a ground that shutting off the water was the right thing to do. She also said that it was only a few people who were stealing water, but somehow this two dollars and eighty-five cents was really important. I was honestly appalled at the ma- at the situation with the community water service. And here are the main reasons why, besides what I've already told you. First, there is no signage at the community water supply to indicate that people are supposed to pay. There's a lock sometimes, but sometimes not. There is no evidence on the website to this effect either. So how are new people or visitors supposed to know that they're supposed to pay? Yet it seems the citizens are being blamed despite the lack of transparency. And the outrage that I've heard from City Hall, I understand, but I also don't because there's so little transparency for the local people. Second, the outrage is about two dollars and eighty-five cents for a thousand gallons. When I spoke, um, with people in the office and Sharon, there was a reference to two people bathing in the water. How much water could these thieves possibly have used of that two dollars and eighty-five cents? Now, I went to school in Arizona. I know water is a very, very important resource, and I know it's about more than the money. I understand that. And that the city's actions have created resource insecurity among the impoverished people of this community, many of whom are not here tonight because they are accustomed to being overlooked. I have been speaking to people at the pump and in the community, and without fail, all peoples, Navajo, Hopi, white, have shared that this is their only water supply. But indeed, water is a human, a vital human necessity. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. The state of Arizona has deemed it a human right and has dictated that governments may not turn off citizens' water. In fact, the city of Scottsdale has attempted the same action that Holbrook is now doing against the community of Rio Verde. Rio Verde sued the city of Scottsdale. Just one year ago, the court sided with Rio Verde, and in addition, the governor has recently signed a bill into law forcing Scottsdale to turn the water back on until the alternative could be offered. I wonder how much this legal action costs the city of Scottsdale, only to lose the suit. So if the city, I understand that the city wants to implement a new system. I support that effort. That is.
Time.
But please don't cut people off while you're waiting.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number seven is a presentation from Frontier Communications.
And is he here today?
They are unable to attend tonight. We're gonna reschedule.
All right. We will reschedule them. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number eight, old business. So this is ordinance twenty-four dash zero five, first reading. Um, we had a similar reading before, but there was some corrections that needed to be made, um, with the first one, so this is why it's coming back with some adjustments and changes, and thus it's gonna be a first reading. So I'm gonna go ahead and just read the, um, a little bit about the background that was given to us in our action item request. Said, as previously presented to city council, the attached lease agreement with Navajo County Hashknife Sheriff's Posse Search and Rescue for parcel number one zero nine dash three seven dash zero zero six eight is amended to reflect requested changes, adding a renewal term of five years and decreasing the insurance requirement to the standard one million dollars rather than the two million dollars. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero five subsequently ratifies the agreement, solidifying the terms and conditions of the lease and authorizing the Sheriff Posse Search and Rescue to begin utilizing the parcel as agreed. Again, this will be a first reading tonight, but, um, you want to turn the time over for just a moment to the manager to add anything to what I just read? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think everything is in the cover sheet. It was the change in, um, having a renewable clause in the original agreement wasn't in there. Um, we did put in the sixty-day notice of termination for either side, and then the two thou- two million dollar insurance coverage, um, was reduced to one million, which is standard, and that's what the posse has already.
So I'm gonna go ahead and read it by heading, and then we will open the floor for discussion. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero five, an ordinance of the city of Holbrook, Arizona, authorizing the lease of certain municipal real, real property to Navajo County Hashknife Sheriff Posse Search and Rescue, and authorizing the mayor and the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney to execute said lease agreement and take all actions necessary to complete the transaction. That will open the floor for a discussion. All right.
This is first reading.
Yeah, it is just a first reading. We're not gonna go to a vote, but we still wanna have any questions. That way, if there's questions for the second reading, now's a good time to ask Vice Mayor Nelson.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you. So, all right, any other discussion for tonight? All right. With that, we will go ahead and, that is our official first reading. We'll move on to item number B. Request for formal acceptance of Arizona Department of Housing CDBG award letter. And so I'll read the action item. Said, for the little bit of background, said the city of Holbrook has been awarded Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, state special project funds through the Arizona Department of Housing in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This funding will be allocated towards two activities. One, activity one, administration, seventy thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars from fiscal year nineteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four. CDBG funds will be used to support the administration of the project. This will include actions necessary for compliance with program requirements such as record-keeping, reporting, and monitoring as outlined by the Arizona Department of Housing and the federal CDBG regulations. Activity number two is the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. Six hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven fifty-six dollars from fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four funds will be designated for the rehabilitation of approximately seventeen low to moderate income households in Holbrook. The maximum investment per household will be forty thousand dollars, with exceptions made on a case-by-case basis depending on individual needs. Homes located in floodplains will not be eligible for assistance under this program. The project meets the low to moderate income national objective with all seventeen households benefiting from the funding classified as low to moderate income. So financial implications, there is no direct financial cost to the city of Holbrook for accepting the grant as the funds are awarded by the Arizona Department of Housing, where the city will be responsible for administering the program in compliance with the CDBG regulations and will need to ensure sufficient administrat- administrative capacity to manage the grant. So with that, we'll turn the little bit of time over to, uh, manager Jacobowski-Waltz for any additional comments on it.
I think everything should be straightforward.
Awesome. All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none will open the floor for a motion. This will be a motion to either approve or to deny the acceptance of this CDBG award, so.
I saw move that we accept this CDBG award.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Right, item number nine, new business. This is the mutual aid compact with the state of Arizona through DEMA and Emergency Management, um, so take. So just a little quick little background, the city of Holbrook entered, entered into a mutual aid compact with the state of Arizona through the Emergency Management Division of the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs on October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. This compact, set to expire on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, has provided the city with critical support and resources during emergencies. By collaborating, collaborating with state agencies, Holbrook has benefited from access to state-level emergency response coordination, disaster relief, and technical assistance, ensuring the city's readiness and resilience in times of crisis. Renewing the compact for another ten years would continue to safeguard Holbrook by maintaining vital support channels, ensuring rapid response capabilities, and reinforcing the city's ability to effectively manage natural disasters, public health emergencies, and other unforeseen crises. The mutual aid compact is an essential part of Holbrook's emergency management strategy, and its renewal would reaffirm the city's commitment to public safety and disaster preparedness. Um, manager Jacobowski-Waltz, any comments?
No, this is, um, again, something that was signed previously with the, um, the city and the state, DEMA. Um, most municipalities have this contract. This is really just a continuation of that contract, and it helps us if there are any large emergencies, we get funding that comes in instead of us having to have that financial burden.
All right, thank you. Any question or discussion from the council?
Uh, I think an example of that, if I may, Mayor, would be the train derailment that we had on Apache Railroad several years ago, um, where it was just beyond what the city of Holbrook could handle. And so I, I believe we had state and federal aid come in on that. Randy, you were here during that time, weren't you? The derailment on Apache?
Hmm, I remember that.
Good. Good, so.
I agree. I think it's important. All right, we will go ahead and open the floor for a motion.
We'll make the motion to accept or sign the contract to continue.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number B, bulk water station. All right, I'll read the background. The city of Holbrook has a potable water station behind City Hall. The station has become extremely difficult to run and monitor. Staff has researched received quotes for a dispensing station. Six companies were asked for quotes, three quotes were received. Aqua Flow International Incorporated in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Flowpoint Environmental Systems Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents. And LMEC in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. The request or the recommendation from, uh, administration would be to award Flowpoint Environmental Systems Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents. So this is the more expense, is more expensive, but there are no additional fees. This is standalone system, will integrate with express bill pay. The other quotes will end up costing more in the long run as they charge fees per transaction. We'd like to turn a little bit of time over to, um, Mr. Sullivan and also, um, to our manager for additional information.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, the quotes were, um, pretty hard to shift through. Um, so in the end, uh, talking to the, to the business owners of all of these, um, finding out the hidden fees in the, the lesser, um, systems, it was gonna cost us more in the end. For example, um, LMEC, uh, re- required us to have an iCloud where everything was uploaded to iCloud. So we would've had to pay for the iCloud service, and that was not in their quote. Um, the other one was a, a closer vendor from Flagstaff, but he charged, he charges a per, um, per-transaction fee. So without knowing those fees, those could be astronomical on a monthly basis, so. Um, in the end, after all of our research, we are recommending going with the higher, um, company. It will be a complete standalone system, and then it'll be integrated with our existing Cassell and Express Bill Pay. So it'll be completely hands-off from, um, us in the office, which will free up, up the office staff as well. Um, and then it'll, it'll mo- we can monitor it from the office and those kind of things.
Yeah, we have a few questions, so go ahead, Vice Mayor Nelson.
So would you just walk me through it? Let's say I'm one of these people from Sun Valley, and I've come here with my truck. How does that work?
So this, this, um, system that we're recommending would be a standalone box. Um, they will be able to either log on to a computer and upload funds on that?
From a personal computer?
On a personal computer. They would just log into a website and upload their funds from that. Um, or they could do it at the station. So they would be able to swipe their card, uh, multiple tender kind of things at the station and to be able to get their, their water at the station. The station would then, um, monitor the gallons, the gallons you leave in it.
So if I'm buying a thousand gallons in the back of my trailer, how much is that gonna cost me?
Well, right now, um, it, right now, it'll still be that two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five.
Correct.
And what kind of security is there? I mean, this all happened, right, because of vandalism?
Yeah, so, so what, what we're actually planning on doing is removing the station in the back and pu- uh, putting a new location, um, by our transfer site. Our transfer site is open on weekends, and then we have a little section over there to where we could add additional fencing onto the, um, fencing that we already have to enclose that box. So then only the, the monitor and the dispensing piece will be available to the customer.
Okay, so the transfer site that's just south of the railroad tracks? Okay.
So will this be available twenty-four seven?
And this, w- going by this, it will be available twenty-four seven.
Will it be lit in the evening and the night?
So if I come up. I haven't looked at that, but I believe there's a pole right there, so we could put a light over there if there isn't one already.
So it'll be no more cost at this time, and it will be accessible twenty-four seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Randy, and how quickly? One second, sorry. Uh, Councilman Dixon was next, and then we'll go to you, so go ahead.
So you answered one of my questions about twenty-four seven. Uh, how, how will moving it over to the transfer site increase security?
Because, well, um, one, one, it's open more during the day. So there'll be an onsite person at the transfer site on Saturdays and Mondays, so that's, uh, one extra day. We don't have extra security. The after-hours, it isn't gonna be as secure, um, but except for that fence that we can put up and build that. There's also, um, how we, we're gonna have to plug in an ethernet cable. We'll be, we should be able to put cameras out there on, on that to monitor any, any vandalism.
And will it be in a location, 'cause I see some of these folks coming in with, with trailers, with their tanks on their trailers. The location where it's gonna be, is it gonna be conducive for them to get in with any kind of vehicle that they need?
Yeah, the, the, the right plan, the plan right now, i- i- they'll just turn in, and right before they turn into the actual transfer site, that's where that'll be, is to the, to the north of that building and entranceway.
Okay, and once we approve this, what's the estimate, estimate on when that'll be up and running?
Um, prob- uh, I think it was four to six weeks. I've already got, um, in preparation for this, I have Daniel, um, getting ready, the blue stakes ready and the saddles to do a new tap over there, so that way we can have that done. So it's really just waiting on this station to get built. We'll have everything else ready to be plumbed in.
Okay, four to six weeks, and what can these folks do in the meantime? Before that moves up and running?
Well, well, we were scheduled to, um, to close it at the end of the month, um, but I think the system that we have back there is kinda working with the key, so, um.
It just puts a strain on us because we've got, right now, the system is, people come in, they bring in their driver's license. It's still not foolproof because the other night we had somebody that didn't lock up. Anyway, so somebody could still come back in and take water that they didn't come in to pay for, um.
I, I understand that, but these folks, I don't think, can wait four to six weeks.
There is a place in, in, Snowflake?
Snowflake.
No, Snowflake that, that has water that they can go to.
But, but right now, if I'm one of these people, I can come during daylight hours and get water here, back here, right now.
We have it scheduled until the end of the month.
Okay.
The end of October.
Correct.
Can we extend that?
And this has been posted for three weeks.
Can we extend that till?
Till the other ones up and running.
The systems up and running? There's no reason why.
When you say sh- when you say shut up, that mean like, are you completely turning off the water too, just like?
We turn off the water at, after the last customer, um, and our last cutoff is four-thirty because it depends on how many gallons somebody takes, how long that takes, because we close at five, and we need to make sure that everybody pays and we can close out here. Um, so we've monitored that, asking how many gallons. So four-thirty is the shut-up. After that, we turn the water off. It cannot be assessed because, again, we still have tampering even with the system that we have now.
So just to clarify, the residents of the Sun Valley area are not without water. They're just, it's restricted hours because of here, of the new system. Okay.
For another week.
Correct.
So, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So are we shutting down at the end of the month? Are we winterizing that? Is that why? Or what, what's the reason for shutting that down?
It was gonna be winterized, correct.
Okay.
So.
Are we able to leave it open until we get the system going, so?
It is.
I have another question. So if you're being winterized, how do we do it in the past? Was it turned off in November in the past as well, to be winterized?
No, we, um, we, um, ran an extension cord out there and, um, had a heating, a heating wire on it to keep it from freezing.
But then again, now we have to monitor the heating element in there.
And I know part of the reason they're moving to the transfer station, we've had parents play during the summer, 'cause that's where the splash pad is and the activities, and there's a lot of trailers and a lot of kids you can't see, so.
Thank you. I was gonna mention that, um, yeah, during the summer, it does get, uh, backed up with traffic, and so it's, it's kinda dangerous with having the amount of children on the splash pad with the traffic coming through there with extra water. So we were already kinda thinking about moving it to another location just for that log jam aspect, and this will give us an opportunity to do that.
Can I clarify it? So we're not, we did not shut off the water to Sun Valley. It's just the potable water that benefits.
Only this water is turned off.
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to clarify.
But the potable water that goes to Sun Valley to the homes and whatnot was never shut off?
Just, just this spigot out here.
Just the ones that haul water?
Haul, water haulers.
Mayor Corina was.
No, I, I don't have a question anymore.
Well, I did forget. I'm sorry about that. You have to speak up down there. I can't see ya.
I have a question, Mayor, must.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman Black.
So this, this system just takes care of the people from South, that's been using, utilizing the water here?
Correct.
So what do you do about the McClouds Road?
That, that one's gonna be determined still, 'cause right now we still have, uh, logs, and I lock that door, so we, we have a security. So we, we have a security type system already over there, cause it's on, on the SCADA. So that one, that one's gonna be, uh, something we'll have to address in the future.
Where's that, at the pump house or?
Right there at the turnoff.
Yeah, the construction.
Apache, Apache.
And that one is di- a different animal too, because it's, uh, it's extremely bulk water and it's non-potable. So it's, it's really main, mainly used for construction and, uh, water tankers.
Yeah, you're talking about, I know what you're talking about.
Uh, one, one more that I'm just gonna let, just gonna put out there, uh. Snowflake's not the next closest place to get water, if people wanna get water.
Josephine wasn't potable.
Well, my creed heads is, I need five miles outside of town, he'd be glad to sell you water, but it's about three to four times more than the city charges. So whoever want, I mean, but just know, the water is available, it's just that.
And, and Adamant too, right?
Adamant, I think, is a salty water.
Adamant has their own system?
So I'm, I'm just reminding everybody that, no, we're, we, we gotta understand that. We've been looking at the prices on that water compared to what the citizens pay anyway, it's a long story, but just know that we're not in the water business. We'd love to keep everybody doing the same thing we're doing, but at some point in time, you know, we, we've got to utilize what we have also. And if, if, this is a lot of money to be spending out to, to do this, is it worth it? I mean, to put this system in place over here, is it worth it?
So we'll vote on tonight whether it's worth it or not, so.
No.
And that's what we'll vote on tonight, to see if we wanna vote for it or against it and which one, so.
Yes, is there any way to compare the way we're doing it now and money that we're making? If it's feasible to pay fifty-three thousand dollars, are we gonna make that money back over an extended period of time? And if so, how long?
I, I calculated this, um, i- if, we're, we are actually gonna, uh, bring some rates back to council. And if those rates pass, cause we could set rates in the future to pay this back. Well, the, the rates that we're coming up with that, that, um, other municipalities are, are, um, charging customers. We could pay this back within two years.
Okay, um, do you guys have any idea what we, what residents pay per gallon right now?
Uh, in, in town residents pay two twenty-seven per gallon, uh, that's the summer rate.
Per thousand?
Oh, per thousand, yeah, um, that's gonna change next month and it's two twenty, or two eighty-five per thousand is what out of town.
Yes, and so you'll be presenting that at the next city council meeting?
Well, well, um, yeah, we're gathering the information, but we gotta go through the process, cause we'll have to do public notice and all that kind of stuff.
So we were gonna present this month that there's some other information that we needed, plus, um, legal advisors of, of the process that we need to take. And a letter of intent and then the public hearings, et cetera, so it kind of puts back a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
A- and we are extremely, extremely low cost right now compared to others. So, um, we do, it, it is something we've needed to address to raise the, the rates for out of town, um.
I think we're getting off topic.
But.
So, all right, with this, I just want another comment, and since it's not an agenda item about keeping the water open until the other system. Um, I'll just ask administration to keep that in mind till we get it on the council. I don't know if it needs to be a council decision versus a, an administrative decision, as far as making sure that we don't go without water. While we wait for the new system to go into place, um, are you, can you?
From, from what I'm gathering now, they don't have access to the water Friday, Saturday, or Sunday.
Correct.
So they've got to make arrangements to make sure they're in here and get their water before Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I mean.
And that's standard for individuals that decide on their own to live off grid.
Sure.
You know how many gallons your tank holds, when you run low, what your usage is. And you plan for your, your water wherever your, your source is, so.
Could we make sure that we put that on the website?
So there, so there is, um, something on the website already, and it's also posted out there, it's posted on the front, um, door saying. Uh, what our operating hours are for that and when we had planned to turn off at the end of the month. And then again, this has been, um, out since the eighth and the fifteenth, been posted.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe what we can do too is part of the motion is to add to the motion that we keep access here until the other system's in place. That could be a potential motion, I wanna make sure, cause water is vital.
Whatever the pleasure of council is, we'll make arrangements. Now we'll just be monitoring a lot more frequently, because again, we think we have a good honor system here and it's, it's still just not working for us.
Potentially, it's only another four, six weeks, so for me, I would like that. Um, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for a motion.
I move that we accept the bid that Randy told us about, the, the high bid.
Fifty-three thousand one eighty?
Yeah.
And with Flowpoint?
To Flowpoint.
Yeah, Flowpoint Environmental Systems Inc., an amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I second.
For the motion and a second, any further discussion?
Can we amend that motion to include the, um, this spigot out here to be available until the transition of the new one?
Would you consider that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So wanna s- amend your motion?
So I made my motion to, to keep the, the current system available those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of every week. So people perhaps still have access to it.
Until this system is in place.
Until the system's in place.
Great, do you still second it?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, any further discussion?
I'm just watching Lisa try to run all that.
I know.
All right, all in favor say aye, aye, any opposed, motion passes, thank you. All right, item number C, contract with Aldridge Consulting LLC. We'll just give a little bit of background information. So the city has used these types of services in the past to help educate taxpayers while also increasing collections. The last time to have such a service was back in two thousand twelve with Al Holer, Hallers and Associates, and the returns went well. Al has since retired and Mr. Sullivan, I'm assuming, has reached out to other entities on recommendations for the service. Staff met with Cindy at Aldridge Consulting and recommended utilizing her firm for these services. The initial term will only be one year to make sure the firm is a fit for the city. Uh, financial implications would be eighteen thousand dollars for the consulting, but with the target to co- to collect two hundred and fifty percent in returns. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, if you don't mind explaining a little bit what the service is gonna do and how we get that two hundred and fifty percent?
So, so we, um, when we've done this with the past, there are very few, uh, consultant firms that have access to the Department of Revenue databases. You have to ha- go through a lot of confidentiality reporting, those kind of things. Um, so they, they take it very serious. She, um, Aldridge Consulting, um, has been doing this for, uh, Snowflake Taylor, Kingman, so other cities around us. Um, and, and she has gotten back the, um, the two hundred and fifty percent. Her, her goal is more or less not to just audit and collect money. But, um, her firm is really about education, educating, um, taxpayers. If they do have an audit and they do owe money, then she, she likes to sit down with them and tell them, teach them how to fill out their, their returns correctly. When we, um, went with Al before, I think both of you guys were still here, um. A lot of the, the failure to pay proper taxes is, really does come down to an educational thing. And it goes both ways sometimes. Sometimes you'll pay the tax and say, oh, I forgot, I could have taken this credit, and you overpay the tax. Sometimes, um, you know, sometimes it, it works in our favor, sometimes it don't. But either way, it's a great opportunity to, um, keep businesses honest, um, and audit them and then educate the public as well.
Appreciate it, so, all right, any questions or discussion, yes, Councilman Dixon?
So, um, did any of us go out to bid?
No, we didn't go out to bid, it was, um, under professional services. And like, like I said, um, I was researched, we researched, um, what other companies were being used. And so Snowflake Taylor and a bunch of other surrounding areas recommending, recommended going with, with Aldridge.
So is there a recommendation, you reached out to the local communities?
Yeah.
Okay, cause Cindy seems to be an expert in QuickBooks, not necessarily the, the tax side of it, am I incorrect?
Yeah, a, a lot of, a lot of small businesses use QuickBooks. So it's a, um, it's an easy platform to, to learn. And so based off of that, that's what she would, she would help.
But my, my, what I'm asking is, is her expertise in the tax side of things?
She, she, um, she had, she, yeah, I mean, so, what she told, um, explained to me with her company. Uh, I think her husband's involved too, um, but anyways, they, they, um. They are on the, the, the tax side of it. They, they really like the educational side of the taxing. And that's where they go with the small businesses with, um, the QuickBooks.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty percent return on investment would, uh, would be forty-five thousand dollars that we're anticipating collecting. But we're just assuming that, correct?
Correct.
Then did you do something similar though?
Yeah, and then, so it, when we, when I was researching that, um, they did, she did meet those goals. Um, and that's why we only, we're only recommending to go, um, for one year. Cause that way, if it's, if it's not gonna be a fit, then we could cut it off fairly quickly.
And do you know how, and I went through their information, but do you know how they would reach out to businesses that either aren't paying what they should be? Or by mistake or omission?
So, so what they do is, um, they'll get information off of the Department of Revenue website. They will, um, send out letters, um, discovery type letters, asking, um, for people to give them their information. And, and then they'll take that information, um, and go through it and see if there's anything that sticks out.
What type of information would they be requesting?
Well, it'd be sales tax receipts, uh, how much you pay, those kind of things.
And what's the law or the rule that mandates that they submit those?
They, um, so they work with, with the Department of Revenue. And there is a statute in, uh, ARS thirty-eight five eleven. Five eleven, that, that, um, requires, uh, individuals that pay those taxes, that they can, um, the. And that's how the Department of Revenue does it too, cause they, they do internal audits themselves, so.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Is this gonna be for businesses that are within Holbrook?
Yeah, it'll be within Holbrook that pay, well, some businesses, um, pay sales tax for Holbrook. But they'll be, you know, in Phoenix, all those places, so the big corporations. Um, a lot of times when they audit us, they'll find errors for other people too. So it kind of benefits the state of Arizona if they do find any of those discrepancies.
For businesses that are registered with us or if they just start up?
Well, all businesses in Holbrook that paid sales tax should be registered with the Department of Revenue. So that's where all that information is, uh, with the Department of Revenue.
Is the eighteen thousand, is it, well, how long is that?
It's gonna be for one year.
So it's eighteen thousand a year, in, if we continue to like say the next three years, we'd be paying eighteen thousand for three years?
Yeah, but, but at that point, we'd have to bring it back to you, cause it's only a one year.
All right, Councilman Dixon has it.
So you quoted Arizona Drive Statute thirty-eight five eleven, that's, and I pulled it up, it's cancellation of political subdivision and state contracts. It doesn't address what you just talked about, could you give me the proper statute?
Maybe I did. Conflict of interest, maybe it was in this agreement.
On number twenty on page six, it does say statutory required provisions, the provision of ARS thirty-eight dash five eleven. Unincorporated herein by disreference pursuant to thirty-five dash three nine four, as may be amended to this extent. The consultant hereby certifies that it does not use and agrees to not to use during the term of this agreement any of the following forced labor of ethnic. So that's the China, um, thing, so I'm not sure, yeah, how that.
Well, I'd have to get back with you on that, there is a statute that allows.
Yeah, none of the statutes listed in, in here.
Yeah, I, I thought that, I thought there was a, I thought there was a statute on that for inquiry. But I could get that back to you, Councilman Dixon.
All right, yes, go ahead.
So Randy, you're saying that two hundred and fifty percent return is the average, like when Snowflake and? So on our eighteen thousand dollars invested, we're expecting forty-five thousand dollars?
At least, at least.
Okay.
And did this city do this about ten years ago, you said?
Yeah, um, back in twenty-twelve, um, when we had Al, I think we collected, oh, um. It was over five hundred thousand dollars, over a five or six year period, so.
Thank you.
One more question.
Go ahead.
So why can't we do this ourselves? As a finance director, you have access to AZDR?
We do have access to it, um, we do have the, um, authority to do it with the Department of Revenue. Um, but manpower, it, it takes, it takes a lot of time to.
And actually going through and extracting the information that we need to be able to realize who and who isn't paying. Um, is time consuming, again, manpower that we don't have.
And these guys do it all the time, so they're experts, they're a lot faster at it than something. I mean, there's, s- sometimes day-to-day operations are pretty taxing. So to be able to have to do something like this, um, it's gonna cost city staff way more than eighteen thousand dollars a year in time to do something like that.
Right, Councilman Black?
Yeah, I have, I'm, I'm confused here Randy, because this is helping, this is helping businesses that owe taxes to us, correct?
So we'll realize un, un, unpaid taxes to the city, which would mean more money to us.
Okay, well, let me understand this, because doesn't all the taxpayers that, that have this bill, they send it into Phoenix? It all goes to the state, then the state refunds Holbrook its portion of that, correct?
That is correct, as long as their, as long as their, uh, tax form is filled out correctly.
So what we're saying is, either the people aren't paying their taxes to Phoenix?
Yeah, that's what.
So.
Does this mean audit?
So all the business owners are gonna receive an audit here in Holbrook?
Well, not all of them, I mean, they'll, they'll go through and they, they will, they will pick some that, um, that might seem out of.
Like red flag, that they're protecting.
Right, that red flag, and it'd be those types of things.
Well, why are we paying eighteen thousand dollars for people that owe taxes that aren't paying them?
Because that's what Councilman Gibson was going to, because we don't have the staff to go after some of these businesses to do that. These guys are professionals that can, um, access the system just like we do, but they're doing it all the time, so. Um, you know, they, they could see the red flags, they could see the inconsistencies of, of, um, the data. And then ask for the inquiries.
And it's not an intuitive system to go through that, you've gotta sit through and try to manipulate, you know, where you're extracting information from. And right now, we're, have lost revenue that we don't even know how much it is. And that's the reason to bring in a consultant to, to look at that and see how much, um, like Randy said, a couple of years ago, that was what, at least a hundred? Um, like Randy said, a couple of years ago, that was what, at least a hundred thousand a year over the five year period? That's five hundred thousand dollars that was unrealized until you had, you brought somebody in like this to, to look at the, the numbers.
Like I spoke to a councilman recently from our neighboring communities, and they were just telling us, they too have hired somebody, and they said they've, have found quite a bit of money just through this process, so a lot of communities do it, so.
Okay, I under, I understand it now, I didn't understand the, the deal, but I understand.
But I'm gonna do, this will be a resolution, and so I'm gonna go ahead and read it by heading, and then we'll go ahead and have one last discussion here before we go to the vote. Resolution number twenty four dash thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Holbrook, Arizona approving and authorizing the professional services contract between the City of Holbrook and Eldridge Consulting LLC for the purpose of sales tax review and compliance services. Lisa, you said I'm good with just header?
Yep.
Awesome, alright, so any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the floor for a motion.
I move that we pass resolution number twenty four dash thirteen.
I'll second that.
Awesome, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Um, Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes, thank you. Alright, item number nine, City Hall roof repair. I'll just give you a little bit of history. On August thirty first, twenty twenty four, City Hall's roof was blown off during a strong windstorm. The city filed a claim, the claim adjusters recommended the whole roof to be replaced. Staff has been getting quotes for the replacements, three quotes were received. Early Bird Roofing, SOL for rolled roof at forty eight thousand two thirty. Early Bird Roofing, SOL for TPO roofing, it's a different type of roofing, is for sixty two thousand one hundred thirty five dollars and eighty cents. And KGJ Roofing for a TPO roofing for fifty four thousand six hundred sixty five dollars. And I understand there's gonna be a little bit of a, a recommendation change, we'd like to turn the time over to Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you, so we, I went on vacation last week, and so I got this agenda item, uh, ready, uh, before I was, uh, talked to Michael Young. And, um, at that point, we were gonna go with the TPO roofing and, um, the lowest bidder at that time. Since then, we, um, we were looking, I talked to Mike and, uh, Early Bird Roofing actually was gonna do an additional sheeting under the T, TPO roofing, and it was gonna, uh, make the roof a lot sturdier. So in doing.
Can you tell me what TPO?
So, uh, TPO roof, TPO is, um, a thermoplastic rubber kind of stuff. So basically, right now, um, the way our roof is now, is we just have, uh, I think they're one by sixes that go across the roof, and then rolled roofing goes up over the top of it. Well, there's little voids in that roof. So by doing just the TPO roofing, if anything heavy was to fall on those voids, it would go right through, through the roofing, and it would do that with the rolled roofing either, either way. So what, um, Early Bird Roofing is suggesting is, we actually, um, strip the roof, sheet it all the way across, and then do that rubberized coating all the way across. That way, it's gonna add more durability and get rid of those voids in the roofing.
Now, now, by doing that, is that the cost that you have down here?
So, so that is gonna, uh, change, so now, um, I am, um, recommending that we go with Early Bird Roofing for sixty two thousand one hundred thirty five dollars and eighty cents, of which thirty three thousand six thirty one will be recouped from the insurance claim.
And you said that sixty two thousand one thirty five will include the extra lumber?
Sheathing, yep. And that's why it's, that's why it's quite a bit more expensive.
Yeah, sorry, they, I heard them first. So was it, Councilwoman Tafoya?
On the, the one that you recommended to begin with, did we check with them to see if they would do that?
They would do the sheeting, uh, but it was additional cost.
At what, what was the additional cost for them to do the sheeting? We don't have that here.
Well, they, they had it in here, let me see.
Is it ten thousand more, and then your bids would be all pretty close to the same?
So Early Bird was gonna do the additional sheeting at no additional cost?
Well, it was included.
Oh, it was included with the second?
It was included. So Randy, is it sheeted with OSB or?
Yeah, what was the sheeting?
Right now, it's one by's, one by's going diagonal, there's no sheeting right now.
But I mean, he said it was gonna be sheeted, so that there was no voids.
Right.
What, what will it be sheeted with?
With, like, OSB?
Plywood, four by eight sheets.
Alright, we'll let him in, so, he's still looking up this answer.
And I'd like to know what the warranty on that will be.
They're, they're, they're twenty years with the TPO system.
Is that for both, with Early Bird and KGJ Roofing?
Yeah, yeah, it, the material itself, the TPO material itself is a twenty year warranty.
Is there a guarantee or a warranty with the company that who's going to install it?
Well, it, that, the labor to install is just, that's the, they're just gonna do a one year labor. It's the material that's the twenty years.
Okay. But there was a one year with labor with both companies?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So I think the question is now Randy is, is KG, KGJ, if they added that plywood on there, is their cost gonna come?
Yeah.
That's what he's looking up right now, to see what that additional cost is.
I, I totally support you in going that direction with the roofing material, though, it's heck of a lot better than putting rolled roofing up there again, and you're just asking for more trouble.
So much paddock.
Yeah, well, it's done that a time or two.
It don't say, it just says an additional charge of ten dollars to seventeen dollars per lineal foot.
And that's a big difference, ten to seventeen dollars.
And there's almost six thousand square feet there. So even, even at ten dollars, you're looking at six thousand dollars.
Yeah, cause we're only a seventy four hundred dollar difference at this point, seventy four seventy.
I wanna say I read it somewhere.
Alright, we'd like to go ahead and open the floor for a motion, then we'll still have time for a discussion as well.
Um, I wanted to get the estimate for if he did, if Randy did talk to the KGJ Roofing, and what the cost would be to have that additional sheeting to see.
He just said it'd be anywhere from ten to seventeen dollars a foot.
And that was when he asked them if that was?
Yeah, so, so they didn't give it a.
That was the quote, I, I did not meet, uh, with these guys, Michael Young did. Um, so I didn't meet with them, I just, that's the information they gave me on here.
So your quotes are gonna be pretty comparable with either one?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Potentially KG, KGJ could be quite a bit more, if it, if it's close to that seventeen dollars a lineal foot.
Well, I think that's, we should check that for sure.
I'd like to have that estimate or at least that, a quote, so that you, we can really compare.
So you said how many feet we had?
Six thousand.
It's, uh, fifty nine hundred square feet on this building.
Yeah, I think, I just mean the ten to seventeen is the, the type on the table. So we can go different ways with the motion, we can approve, deny, or table for more information?
Six thousand ten seventeen.
I'll make a motion to table that until we get the additional information to compare costs and estimates for the same, for the same services.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and a little bit of math going on over here, so.
Ooh.
So.
What was the difficult point?
So.
Ten thousand two hundred.
Alright, do you wanna share what you guys are looking into?
Well, I mean, we just, we were doing the math on everything, like, just we didn't get it from Randy, but even if you went to seventeen dollars, which was their maximum, right, you said ten to seventeen dollars?
Yeah.
Then your, then your cost comes out to the same thing. I mean, it's comparable both ways.
Two thousand. Be ten thousand two hundred more. I, I do know KG, KGJ, has worked with Early Bird as well on, on the other projects on. I'm sure their estimates are pretty close with each other.
Is there a difference in the timeframe of when it, the, it could be done between the two? I mean, are they comparable as the timeframe to get it done?
So are we looking before winter to have this?
Do we have an approximate, I mean, if we okay this tonight, do we have an approximate time?
That, yeah, that I don't know.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to actually table it, and I think maybe part of that, you know, if it is tabled, there could be some additional questions, timeline for both companies. I have a question too, so I know you said we don't have heat right now, is that affecting?
We have heat now.
Oh, we do have.
Not in here.
Not in here.
Oh, yeah, not in here.
We won't have it until the roof gets done.
That's what I was gonna ask, so we're gonna do it later.
So next meeting, if we table that next meeting, we'll be pretty chilled.
Oh, I see. So I guess we can't undo what's done.
Tim's fine.
Yeah.
Terry may change her vote, just kidding.
No, I won't.
We can't, if she wants to withdraw.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, do we withdraw that, because I mean, what, so if we table it for another two weeks?
It'll be three weeks, three weeks, because we have a fifth Wednesday.
Yeah, so what, what questions are we gonna ask then, other than what we have now?
Um, I was requesting an actual estimate to compare costs between both companies for the same services.
We got it, we just.
But, no, it's, that's a.
We don't have it in writing.
I, I'd like to see it, cause I mean, to me, looking at this estimate compared to the KGJ Roofing, compared to the estimate that was provided, I have more information here of what's gonna be completed, how it's gonna be completed, warranty, how much it's gonna cost, what's gonna be done, and this just gives me a rough draft of what it could be. I mean, it doesn't say anything about if there's issues that they, that arise. I mean, I just wanna see that our money's gonna be done spent correctly with the best services.
Comment? Vice Mayor Nielsen, do you have a comment?
I'd like to see it done before the first snowing through.
Here in Flag, it'd been too late, so, okay, so we have a motion and a second to table it. Any further discussion for now? Okay, all in favor say aye to table it?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Was that how many?
They got three, and so.
Three and three.
Exactly, and so, yeah, so I didn't vote, so. I'm torn. I'm gonna say nay. So motion did not pass at this point, so we can have one more round of it with additional motion, a second motion to be presented. So I'll open the floor for a motion.
So I make a motion that we go with Early Bird Roofing for the cost of sixty two thousand one hundred thirty five dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I, I'd like it to be quicker rather than.
Yeah, wait back.
Do we have a timeframe?
If we get a good snowstorm, I mean, you're gonna see more problems and.
Yeah, cause it's, roof's pretty messed up right now, so. Alright, so do you have a question?
Yeah, um, do we have a timeframe on when each company could have this done by?
I, I don't, I, I'll get that information to you guys, though.
See, I just feel like there's not enough information to make, I, oh, I can't make a motion yet.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table, but do you have a ti, an opportunity though to share your thoughts?
I would like to go with KGJ, um, Roofing, if it's gonna be the same cost, knowing that if, I mean, I don't, we don't know like employer worker wise, if we're gonna have it done, when the timeframe is, if it's gonna be the same, and I liked their estimate a whole lot better, had a lot more information.
Do they include the OSB, was Mike?
Well, that's what, that's what I was asking for the estimate, to see if they were going to include that, because Early Bird met, had included that with the second one, that's what the difference that you guys were ta, uh, calculating, was to have that between ten to seventeen per square foot, which comes up to the same, about the same estimate as the first one.
But we haven't given that company
A chance to.
A chance to come back with that quota, I mean, they may quote it cheaper or something, I mean, we don't know that until we get, get that with, along with the timeframe that they would get that done. Both of them, I think we need a kind of a timeframe of when the, it would be completed.
So Terry, you'd like to see the timeframe and like to see the OSB on the KGJ maybe?
Correct. Can we not call a special meeting?
That's what I was just gonna say, can we call a special meeting, we get the information and do it on the next?
Once we got this, could we just call a special meeting to review this?
That's a big cost, I mean, especially if it's a roof to have it done.
So, just as a nod, it's not a vote, but would you guys be open for a special meeting?
Yes.
Consensus, so. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to accept Early Bird Roofing at sixty two thousand one hundred thirty five dollars and eighty cents. Do you have any further discussion?
So, so my, my question here is, yes, we do have a motion and a second, uh, but what we're, what we just talked about is tabling, and we already decided on tabling this.
But since you already had a motion, you have to vote on that motion, and then make another motion to possibly table with the condition that you get those two items that you wanted.
But the first motion, Mike's motion was, it was down, and Mike made another motion that was second. So we have to vote on that one, correct?
Correct, and then if that gets turned down, then we can go back to a third motion, so. And then we.
Do I, do I make that motion?
I thought Tim made the motion, you did the second, yeah.
I, I made it, I think Tim did, I think. That's right.
You made the motion, do you have a comment?
Let, let me just ask, Arsenia, so what, what are you contemplating?
I would like to see the estimate from both, from both companies with the same services, because they, the KGJ, it didn't mention anything about that additional sheeting, which Early Bird did put in there, which is why we initially were going with the lower cost one. But if we ask KGJ, you know, what that cost is gonna be, which he, uh, Randall's, or Randy stated that Mike told him it could be between ten and seventeen, but I don't know where that, I mean, and that's not on the paperwork.
So you're asking them to update their contract, so to send apples to apples comparison?
Yep, with the time.
And with the timeframe.
And the timeline, and I think it'd be appropriate to ask Early Bird for a timeline as well, correct?
Well, both companies for sure.
Correct, so. Wait a minute, so.
I would.
So we saw a motion and a second on it, but you can just voice your opinion, and then we'll go to a vote.
I, I think I wanna withdraw my second.
Yeah, I wanna withdraw my motion.
I'm good with that, so, alright, we'll open the floor for a new motion.
I make a motion to table this and schedule a special meeting once we get the requested information to make a cautious decision vote, okay?
So we, we already had a motion, a second, and a vote on tabling it.
But it's okay, cause new opinions and questions were brought up, and that's the whole point of being able to have that extra discussion. That way, maybe something that wasn't brought up before was brought up the second time, so.
Which was a special meeting.
Which I brought up a special.
Correct, so, I'll second that. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, and now, open for discussion.
I, I, I can agree with that, I think it's a good idea to, to, to get a firm quote, as long as we can do it in a very timely manner, not wait another month to push back on our roof, you know? We gotta get it done.
Alright, so with that, all in favor say aye to table?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Alright, motion passes, thank you. That's why we discuss things. Alright, item number ten, summary of current events, we'll go ahead and start. So, on behalf of the City of Holbrook, we would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation to Harold Martinez, owner of Amigo Plumbing, for his dedication, hard work, and cleaning up a section of our city. Mr. Martinez is a proud Holbrook native and Air Force veteran. He volunteered his time and resources along with four crew members to remove weeds and beautify an area near the historic train depot. His efforts reflect his deep pride in our community, and we are grateful for his contributions. So thank you, Mr. Martinez, for being a shining example to Holbrook's spirit of community pride and service, and for going above and beyond and cleaning up more than just around his home, so. Um, we also, um, wanna thank the City of Holbrook and Holbrook High School Swing Thing for hosting a, our French boarding girls school group that was in town, um, it was a great event. They are, um, actually from Sainte-Laine, France, um, the professor that was helping do this, he actually presented us with a, a great picture of where uh, Sainte-Laine, France is. As he presented it, he said it's a little different looking than Hol, or Arizona, than Holbrook. So he, he gifted, you know, us a, a reminder where they're from, and they made some great connections with the students, and they said, hey, we have the. become a sister city with these guys, and they've welcomed all of us to come visit them, and I think that'd be a beautiful place to live.
Don't tell Chris.
You know? Anyway, so we appreciate them coming and, and teaching us actually about the, um, the footsteps of, um, Marcos, um, Jules Marco. Um, so, I learned a little bit. I didn't know we had such a French connection, so it was great to have it, and he had a connection with the Petrofy Forest and discovering that. But we do wanna thank APS for, um, hosting, or being able to sponsor the dinner for us, so we appreciate them and their efforts. And also to Colonel Mustard for catering the event. Um, last night, Navajo County Attorney's Office and Victim Services held a domestic violence awareness candlelight vigil at Martinez, uh, Gillespie Park. It was a great event. We do really wanna thank especially the Navajo County Victim Services for all their hard work and dedication to those that are victims of any type of, uh, crime, but especially domestic violence. She said thirty-three percent of their cases are actually come from domestic violence, which is too high of a number. It should be zero. So, but we appreciate their efforts and what they do, um, for those, um, that are victims in Navajo County. Um, also on November fourth, Navajo County will also be hosting a veterans event at the courthouse. I'm not sure of the time yet, but they did say it would be, um, that Monday evening on the fourth?
November fourth.
Correct. I'm not sure of the time. Um, they just mentioned to me last night that they would be there, so. Um, as a reminder, it's hard to believe Halloween is a week and a half away. So just a reminder to be, please be extra careful, there's gonna be a lot of kids wearing dark uniforms, things like that, or costumes, and just ask everybody to slow down and be extra vigilant in looking out when you're driving, so. Um, and then with Halloween, I know you guys, nobody boo me, but save the date, December second is gonna be right around the corner, it really is. Six P M, um, we will be having our annual community Christmas tree lighting at Gillespie Park. I've already heard Santa Claus is coming on his Harley again, so it'll be quite the entrance, so. But we wanna thank all the community members, and it really is a, the community coming together to put on this event, and we thank all those that are participating, and they go and help decorate. And, um, anyways, it really is a great community event to come out to. So with that, I am finished, Vice Mayor Nelson.
This Saturday, October twenty-sixth, uh, there's a fundraiser for the food bank that, uh, so every year, the food bank puts together a hundred to a hundred and forty, it'll be a hundred and forty boxes this year to help people that are in need at Christmas time. This, this fundraiser will be a Bunko game, charge will be twenty dollars. Bill Jeffers will be the M C and the auctioneer, and it should be a lot of fun. Registration starts at three, Bunko starts at four, goes till six, and there's gonna be some fun prizes. Also, so the, the food box giveaway is December twenty-first at nine until eleven A M on December twenty-first at the Senior Center. And so, we're taking applications right now. We wanna help people mainly that are, that are in need during the year. And so, people come into the food bank, we're giving them an application. It includes a ham, stuffing, potatoes, all the things for a Christmas dinner. And so we'd like to invite all of you to come if you, if you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black?
You guys work real hard on that, so I, I commend you for that. That's always a good thing that goes on in our community. And it's, it's well received, so I appreciate you for doing that. That's about all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Pac?
Um, when do, when is our parade gonna be in December?
It's, yeah, December thirteenth or fourteenth, fourteen.
We don't have one in September.
Fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
Second Saturday, right?
Yeah, it's the second weekend.
Okay, looking forward to that. We, I have people that stay at my business just to see that, so. Do we know what the Kudos to, our parade?
So, no, we appreciate that, so. The theme is Night Before Christmas or Nightmare Before Christmas. Festival of Trees is that same week, and their theme is Seasonal Hope, so. Councilman Dixon?
Um, so I do have a request of Sharon, uh, if you could, when our packets are ready, if you could shoot us all a, a group text or, or whatever, just letting us know that they're ready. Sometimes I, I forget in my busy, busy life and.
Don't you send a?
I thought Lisa usually did.
I sent it in the email.
Email. Could you just do it in a text?
Once we get our phones, I can, yeah.
Oh, a text, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then, um, talked to, came in and met with Sharon, uh, the other day about Gillespie Park parking, and that, uh, the sheriff's office has been utilizing that as their own parking lot. And, um, I think it scares away some, some of the tourists and, and uses up spaces that should be preserved for, um, our citizens and people passing through town. Um, I saw them parking there today. They do have fifteen spaces up against their building, which I think is still city property. Uh, but I, I think it's okay to use those fifteen spaces, and they have nine additional spaces out in the very front of their building, plus, uh, curbside parking along Arizona Street. I did notice the restriping of the Gillespie Par- Parking Lot, and I, I think that's a good thing, especially how the flow of traffic comes in, uh, to that, uh, to that park. I think that's, that's good. So I appreciate that, and is that, I, I'm hoping that's a continual thing that we're working on. We have, we're in the midst of a, a big election. Early voting started, I think, October ninth for Arizona, and the big day is on November fifth. Um, there is something, um, coming up, uh, during this election cycle that I think is a scourge on Arizona, and that's Prop one thirty-nine, and I will personally be voting against Prop one thirty-nine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Tafoya?
Um, I was gonna bring up the domestic violence thing as well, but, um, just a reminder that, um, tomorrow, um, it's Walk With Me To Be Drug Free that the school does every year, and it will, everyone will gather at seven forty-five at Old Courthouse. And they do a drug-free Love Our School rally, and then the students, teachers, staff in attendance, they will walk to their specific schools from there. And anybody's welcome to go and join in the rally and that type of thing, and they're asked to wear red because it's Red Ribbon Week. And so that's a good thing that's coming up tomorrow morning. Um, next week, we'll start Homecoming Week for the high school, um, different events throughout the week, but ending Friday, it'll be with the parade at nine o'clock in the morning on November first. And I believe it, I'm not sure, I think it comes down Buffalo and then turns right here. And go, cause the judges sit out here in front of the city office, and so then it goes down and then back to the high school, so. It's always a neat thing to, to watch, and then the Homecoming game that night at, at seven, which I'm sure there will be plenty of alumni coming in for homecoming for reunions and, and that type of thing. Um, Kathy did bring up Halloween, but there's a lot of different events taking place, trunk or treats and all of that stuff taking place that whole week, so. If you look at the Hay Holbrook, it will have all those upcoming Halloween events on there. I didn't take the time to write them down, but I know they're in there, so. Take the time to look at those, cause there, different people are having several of them. And that's it. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Pacheco?
I would just mention Homecoming, but it's the only thing I remember.
Great, I appreciate it. Alright, um, Manager Jacobowski Waltz?
So, from the fifth of, um, October to the seventeenth of October, I had meetings with, um, our administrative team to discuss, um, possible fee structures for twenty-twenty-five. Will have that forthcoming to council. Um, I met with, um, Kenny Larson and Mayor Smith, um, as well as Councilmember Pacheco to do a, I mean, PAC. PAC, I'm sorry, to do a sound test, um, at the drag race, the location where there's a potential for the drag race. And had, um, folks stationed in different areas in the city, and nobody could hear any of the revving of those engines, so that looks very promising that there would be no sound issues, um, if the racetrack, uh, proceeds. Um, I also met with Culonera Solar to discuss any zoning issues, um, across city leased property. Um, they are waiting for two private property individuals to give them easement authorization to go across their property, so that's still moving forward. Um, also met, met with Chris Pastors of Real A Z to discuss the potential for E Vs, um, in or near Holbrook. That's an ongoing discussion. Attended the following meetings, Jet Center and Grow Arizona for completing the EPA grant application, um, which should be submitted by the end of this week. Um, also met with Mountain Mojo Group for an initial meeting to discuss marketing and branding of Holbrook, and you got the lowdown this evening. Um, also had a conversation with National Fitness Campaign to discuss the feasibility of the city obtaining a fitness park. Um, APS and Mayor Smith to discuss how APS can continue to assist the City of Holbrook with projects. I'm also continuing to work on the website redesign and initiating the new marketing and branding campaign with Civic Plus and Mountain Mojo respectively. And I did apply for and have subsequently received, um, information that we did, uh, get a grant opportunity for APS. They're processing the five thousand dollar, uh, grant currently, so we, that we should be getting that probably next week. And the goals of that were to, um, get assistance in promoting the cultural exchange that the mayor previously mentioned with the French students. Um, the community engagement for the Christmas tree lighting, having funding going to that, as well as the Route sixty-six anniversary event that is going to take place at the end of May twenty-twenty-five. So we have support from APS for each of those, um, events. Um, again, continuing editing, uh, the EPA grant. Um, working on updating agreements, NPC Petrocom Vertical Bridge Towers, the Cooperative Park Agreement with Navajo County, the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, which was presented to you this evening. Um, again, the Culonera easement. Um, I also am reviewing the following agreements, Navajo County Courthouse, Historical Preservation Society, Sun Valley Utilities, and, um, just received correspondence back from the Chamber of Commerce on the update of that contract with them. Um, for the parking situation at Gillespie Park, um, as Council, as Dixon had mentioned, I did have a conversation with Sheriff Klaus to let him know what our plans were for relining the, um, parking spaces at Gillespie Park. So there will be two, uh, additional, uh, ADA parking spaces near the ADA ramp going to the park, as well as re- realigning the parking spaces. Right now, they're going this way and that way, so, um, uh, Tim Kelly has started the preliminary, uh, work on that. We're also gonna have directional signs, one way in, two-way out off of Hopi, and, um, one way going out onto Arizona, sorry. Um, and I sent an email to Supervisor Whiting yesterday requesting assistance that, um, since the sheriff's department has over the years utilized the parking space, had trainings and whatnot, and all the equipment going through there that has added to the wear and tear of the parking facility. I requested either funding in, in kind for materials or actual financial assistance for that, as well as, um, I understand that they have a, um, sign-making facility that they can make, a sheriff's parking only signs that we can put up against the building on the side, where I've requested, um, Sheriff Klaus to, um, indicate to their, anybody going into that building, their employees park along that side, as well as the front, Arizona is actually public parking, so I can't request sheriff-only parking there, but that is available going into, uh, the sheriff's department. So we have that going on. Um, I would hope that that will be done sometime at the beginning of next week, only because we have some major projects that the Streets Department is working on, um, repairing streets. I would like to, um, give a couple of, um, recognitions. Um, one is for Amanda Packer. She's one of our new administrative assistants. I'd like to take a moment to commend Amanda for her steadfastness and diligence in managing the recent water hall pump station. Her ability to navigate a complex and critical issue with calm resolve has been invaluable to the city, and I would like to recognize her hard work and dedication, which have been integral to addressing this challenge, and I believe her efforts should serve as a model for the level of commitment and professionalism we all strive to uphold. I would also like to recognize Randy Sullivan, who, um, to commend him for his remarkable dedication and tireless effort in finding an alternative solution to the recent water hall pump station. Despite his busy schedule, which includes training Amanda in the front office and managing time-sensitive projects such as a pre- uh, preparation for our upcoming annual audit, Randy has remained committed to resolving this issue. His ability to balance these responsibilities while delivering effective solutions speaks volumes about his work ethic and leadership. The time and energy he has devoted to ensuring the city's operations remain smooth, even under significant pressure, is truly commendable. Um, I'd also like to recognize Lisa Hunt, our city clerk, for her time and invaluable assistance with the front desk while we have been short-staffed. With the recent increase in water hall customers, the traffic at the counter has surged, making her support even more critical. Last week alone, uh, which was actually the week prior to this, um, we served thirty-five customers with an exceptionally busy day on Tuesday, October fifteenth, where we saw twenty-five customers alone in a single day. Lisa's willingness to step in and help during this time has been instrumental in maintaining smooth operations and ensuring that our residents continue to receive timely and effective service. Her commitment and flexibility have been greatly appreciated, and I ask that you join me in recognizing her hard work and dedication during this challenging period. I also received a letter from a community member, uh, recognizing Barbara Blythe for her wonderful, uh, organization and skills w- working with housing. So I'd just like to read that. I'm not gonna say who it is, that's private information, but, um, she says, "I want to extend my sincerest thanks for the exceptional support the City of Holbrook provided recently. I am a senior living on fixed income. My home did not have a safe heating system. I had small electronic heaters in the wall, and I never felt safe turning them on for fear of fire. My source of heat was using space heaters, and because they are not energy efficient, I could only heat some rooms and wear extra sweaters. I applied for the city's housing rehabilitation program, and after processing my application for assistance, the city approved a new split system. The work order included removing five-wall heaters, installing electrical wall outlets, and seal up the wall. Contractors repaired the drywall and even painted it to match. I also had some exterior cracks. The cracks were filled in and painted to match." Again, thank you, City of Holbrook, and a spec- special shout-out to Barbara Blythe. She cares about our community, and because of her professional assistance and support, I know I will probably live longer not having the stress of another cold winter. The difference it will make in my life, I now have safe heating and a cooling, and it's energy efficient."
Thank you very much, so. Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to item eleven, submission of written petition for items on the agenda.
There are, yeah.
Item number twelve, a German, do you have a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
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 Lisa, did you get the motion, so? Mike seconded it.
Yes.
At what time during September twenty?
Nineteen twenty.